...2015 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. And at this time, I will ask Counselor Allen Rudin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Allen. And this is just a reminder for those that may have not been with us before that this meeting is being recorded for broadcast on MCM. It doesn't appear that it's being livestreamed tonight. But for the courtesy of the council and those others in attendance, if you have a cellphone, we ask that you put it on silence and refrain from doing any calls or text messaging. And if you do have to take an important call or texting for the courtesy of others, we ask you to go out in the lobby to do that. So that being said, this is a time in the council that's always a highlight of mine where we ask anybody in the audience if they would like to say anything to the council that is not on our agenda tonight to come forward. And again, JW, you know the rules. State your name loudly and clearly for the record and sign the sign-in sheet, please.
Hi. My name again is JW Milligan. I reside at 624 Northeast Second. My office is a block away. My wife is also here tonight to address you for the first time. There is a Mrs. Milligan. It's not my mother.
I knew your mother. I can tell it's not your mother.
It's a serious thing that I come to you tonight. My family does not feel safe in downtown McMinnville. And I'm sure we are not the only ones. It's been suggested that we move. It's been suggested that I post no trespassing signs everywhere, install gates and cameras, and essential fortress. It's been suggested we carry guns. We do not feel safe. I live and work in downtown McMinnville by choice. I grew up here. I moved myself, my family, and my business to this town, back to this town. I've started a business that will bring family wage jobs. I love my neighborhood due to its diversity of people and the variety of the architectural history, just to name a few things. You know what's amazing is I grew up here a long time, but I think I was growing up too fast. I never went into a lot of neighborhoods, even though we attended the Methodist church there. I never walked a block away. There's so many new places in town. Walking to work is a treat for me. One of my favorite movies is It's a Wonderful Life. I may be idealistic. I'm a dreamer. That vision has dimmed lately, and this Saturday it was shattered. I work early, long, and many times on weekends. I enjoy my work. My office space right now is temporary while we're looking for another place in the historic Odell Building on Third and Ford. You would know it as the News Register. I live on Second, just a block away. People scream and loiter at all hours. People leave needles in the stairwells and then defecate there. Someone turned off the power to my air conditioning, the air conditioning online Northwest the other week, which is the power that also runs my servers. That's how I connect to the world. And then the person that appears to have done it thought it was okay to sleep there, but the noise was too loud. He thought it was okay to sleep there because there wasn't a no trespassing sign because someone brought him coffee. Jeb has told the police to arrest trespassers. He's talking about putting up gates, no trespassing signs. This Saturday morning, I came in early and a transient, I'm going to call him a transient, trespassed behind my office and went back to the corner where the power is. I asked him what he was doing. He responded that he could be there because there wasn't a no trespassing sign. It got verbal, and I told him that it would be trespassing. I felt unsafe, and I closed my back door. He went around to my front doors, and I can't blame my son. I have to blame myself. It was only partly locked. He started yelling, grabbing the door, thrashing it, and saying, "Don't F with me this morning", and threatening me. I did not feel safe. He did not get to me, but he was threatening my life. I do not feel safe. I called the police, and they responded and talked to the person. They told him he was trespassing and not to go near my office. Police did a professional job, and they did a very good job, but they told me they could not do much and that I should put up no trespassing signs and cameras and fortify my property. I do not feel safe, nor does my family. We are not the only ones. I have talked to merchants on Third that do not feel safe and are angry at what is going on. They are afraid to say anything because people will boycott them if their stores, if they said anything. We do not feel safe. I worry that speaking up myself, that it puts at risk my business and my family, will be a target. But as you probably know, I can't keep my mouth shut. People will assume I do not care and I do not understand. They assume wrong. I do care, sometimes too much. I have been threatened with homeless in the past, but this is not about me. The community does not feel safe, nor will the tourists that McMinnville continues to try to attract. We do not want to move. We do not want to live behind fortresses and carry guns. We want to feel safe. There's been talk, but more action needs to happen, and I'm not the only list on this, We must address the behavior that is not acceptable, not only by the police, but also by the institutions which may be voluntarily enabling this unacceptable behavior. My father's last job was a Diagonal Minister for the United Methodist Church. He brought in the co-op. He'd be rolling over in his grave. We need more police to patrol the streets, but they must be allowed to enforce standards of behavior and not be targets themselves. And also, as we know, we've got the Union Gospel Mission and YCAP. I understand that Union Gospel will have like 35 spaces overnight here shortly. Long-term, we need to provide affordable housing. You know, I've talked to the Yamhill County Housing Authority, and there's no appropriate land designated or zoned appropriately for higher-density housing. And Scott, Doug and I have talked about this, okay? And I've talked to you about that. And you know, the long-term thing is we need family wage jobs, not just low-paying tourist jobs. I was not happy to see the Cascade Steel laid off 70 workers. I don't know how many of them will be homeless, and replacing those jobs are difficult. We need to broaden neighborhood involvement in the city so we do not shift people from one part of the area to someplace else. We need people to talk, no matter how much they disagree, solutions can be found. As you know, we have formed a new neighborhood organization called the South Downtown Association of Neighbors called SODAN. It's exciting, and I hope you will support it. Our members also include the churches in our neighborhood, and we are talking, but more needs to be done. I want to be safe, and I want to believe in It's a Wonderful Life. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, JW.
Any questions or...?
I think this is just your opportunity to express your feelings to the council. Thank you. Okay, If Your Lovely Life would like to come forward, and again, sign in on the list and state your full name for the digital record.
My name is Deborah Milligan.
Deborah, can I get you to pull the mic a little bit closer to you so we make sure we can get that recorded?
Not as loud as my husband.
Okay, that's... I won't reply to that. Go ahead.
I'm his better half. I live at 624 First Street, Second Street. Getting used to that address. I wanted to just tell you that I have a soft spot for people that are homeless, and I have Parkinson's, so don't worry about the shaking. When I was a teenager, I was homeless with my mother. And there needs to be things for people that are homeless, but I also feel unsafe at this house at night, and it's kind of scary. And I grew up in a scary neighborhood in LA, and so I know that there's things to be afraid of. But I think this is a wonderful town, and it shouldn't have this define it as it's a new person coming to this town is starting to define it for me. So anyway, I just hope everybody can work together and find lots of different solutions for the different needs of these people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else? Dr. Gibson, come on up and again, write your name down and state your full name and address for the record, please.
My full name? Do I really have to give my first name?
Well, you could just use your first name.
Well, my first name is John. I don't use that.
Use your middle.
Thank you. Scott Gibson, and I'm at 655 Northwest Brookview Court. And I want to just give my perspective briefly on the same issue that the Milligans brought up. It's a tough problem that McMinnville faces that is new to my 58 years living in this city. And the problem is not just homeless people. Being homeless is not a crime, but unfortunately, a disproportionate number of people who are homeless have one of two difficult conditions, either mental illness or addiction. And everyone here is aware of that. And those folks who suffer with both homelessness and mental illness or addiction are at high risk of behaviors such as the Milligans have described that put the rest of the community at risk. And having heard their story and having heard from others in the community, I am concerned that we perhaps are not being muscular enough in our response to those who breach conduct that basically puts other people in a position of feeling at risk and possibly puts them at risk. I mean, obviously, it's not, you know, there's no crime in being a diabetic, but if you leave your needles around where children find them, then you're doing something wrong. And so if you happen to be an addict, yes, you've got a disease, but if you leave your needles around where they're going to be a hazard to others, then the community really needs to step in. So I don't have a solution for these larger issues. Obviously, our mental health system really is very weak compared to what it needs to be, and that's something really for the legislature to deal with. But at this level, at the city level, I think that we should consider a more virile, more muscular approach to dealing with those who step over the line and let them know that there are boundaries, because I would really hate to see it come to the point where people started putting no trespassing signs on their lawns. If that ever happened in McMinnville, clearly, we've got a problem at that point. So I thank you for your time, and if it would be okay, I think the school board would like to borrow this building from time to time.
Just for you, Dr. Gibson, it has been offered before.
Really?
Yes.
Well, then I need to talk to Mary Alice.
For a minor charge, of course.
I see. All right. Well, I'll have to talk to Mary Alice about that. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to him? Bob, come on up and again, sign in. You know the rules.
Name is Bob Emmerich. I live at 5765 Dawson Lane in Mac. I'm just going to kind of mirror what I said before, but maybe from a different perspective, although I've lived in McMinnville a lot of years, have a lot of involvement in this community. Although, as you know, I'm involved in building a building here, and we now have restaurants in that building. And I basically own the Oregon Station's building with two businesses in that building. I own the Third Street, well, it's called Brook Street House at the end of Third Street, which is a VRBO. And I now, of course, own the Chaos Building, plus I own and the major owner of the two restaurants on that property. So I have somewhat of a vested interest in what happens on Third Street. This is my first time, although I've been involved in the community for a lot of years, it's my first time to really kind of live Third Street, and it's been an interesting process. The thing is, it's been a great experience and had a lot of support in the community, and I appreciate all that's happened. The interesting part of this, I think, is maybe a piece of information that, again, this is a very, it's a multi-faceted issue we have and a lot of problems involved in that. But at the end of the day, its impacts have to be understood. Number one, I just, we just, we just found out, I think we all know that McMinnville is now a national Main Street. It's been recognized as a national Main Street. We're on the very top of that list, okay? It's an amazing position to be taken care of. We know how many hundreds of thousands of people come to McMinnville to visit this town. And as I, Doug and I have had a lot of conversations about my building and who attracts. We know that we are no longer a farming and logging community. We're a tourist community, and that's been an amazing change in our community. But I found out the process, it's been a fun time. There have been some really troubling things happen. For example, on our building, we have had five of our vehicles broken into in our parking lot in the back area, substantial broken into. We've had three or four of our lady employees accosted on the backside of our property. We have 40 employees repotting in our building, and it's a significant issue for that happening. I've had several of clients from out of town be accosted by homeless people. So the issue is not one where it's kind of not nice. It actually impacts the economic viability of a lot of businesses in the community as well as the safety. I think that, you know, we said earlier, the issue of safety is an issue just not for people who live here, but it's also people who are visiting here. And so it impacts the success of McMinnville. And I don't have all the answers to it, but it's serious, okay? I mean, I can't remember, I've lived in McMinnville how many years? I never had my car broken into. In less than three months, we've had four or five cars broken into on behind our building. That's a pretty significant issue. It's not something that's happened once or twice, at the point where I have to say, now we have to, now we've actually added more lights in the back of our property because we're concerned for our employees. Many of our employees are women, and they come out of that building late at night, and they're concerned. And that's kind of a new feeling I've had in McMinnville. I had to save myself. I never thought that way before, being in McMinnville, have concern for women and Third Street, we're about their safety. So as we work through these issues, I think we have to understand it has huge, has huge impact on our community. It's just not, it's too bad, or I don't know what we can do about it, but in fact, it has huge impacts on our viability as a community because we're highly leveraging ourselves more and more to tourism. And we've all been many places, including probably New York City, other places, go, boy, we go through these areas, man, look at all those homeless people. They're a real bummer. I remember a few years ago in New York City, and there'd be all these, and I hated it. I mean, in a way, it just, it wasn't that I didn't care for these people, but in fact, it was really kind of a problem being accosted on an ongoing basis by these people for either money or just by their behavioral issues they've had because of the kind of problems they have. So it's going to be, it's going to take, as I believe, it's going to take a community effort to really look at all this. I know we have rights that everybody has in this community, and I know we can't violate those rights for rich people, but at some place along the line, we have to seriously understand, this is no longer just kind of an issue that is kind of problematic, but in fact, it affects the viability of businesses on Third Street. And I know, I know that, you know, that's a first, when I came to Third Street, the first thing I really dealt with, and of course, we've had people accosted in front of our building, which I've had, we've done a lot of work keeping people moving by as they go by our area and don't bother our clients. So my statement is more of one supporting what's been said already, that in fact, this is not just a small issue, and it's an issue we have to deal with in most communities. Unlike most communities, this is a Main Street of the United States. We are telling ourselves being a marvelous place to come to, and people, all the world are coming here, all the world are coming here, okay? So for us to support the vile bit of our community, we have to figure what are all those people, I'm sure, as I was talking to Martha, it's going to be a multiple issue here. It's not going to handle one situation. But I know this, people in this community, if we solve, find a way to solve some issues, we'll get behind that. If we can come with a way to deal, a different way to deal with the issue, I think, as I know, as I was talking to many of the owners of businesses on Third Street, they also, what do I, what can I do to solve this problem? How can I help solve this problem? They're not saying, okay, city council or city solved the problem, but give us the leadership that's required to move us out of where we are right now and move us forward. So I think maybe more than anything else than anything right now, looking for, looking for leadership from you folks to help us find a way through this to solve, and it is a serious problem. I mean, I, enough that I, when my employees are worried about walking out the back of the door on Third Street in McMinnville, it's a concern of mine. It is. When I see people who have their vehicles, and they're not just broken, they're violently broken into, broken into and $1,000 spent on those cars to take care of it, it's not just an issue we can't let go, but look at it. So I guess my last comment simply one is saying, really, all we're looking for is leadership. It's a multi-faceted problem, and I think we all want to get support of it. I'm the president of the Rotary Club, and if we can do some things, looking, so we're looking at ways to help the community, what are those areas we can to solve those tough problems we want to be part of? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Mr. Nottingham, come on up and have a seat, and if you would, sign in, Nathan, please.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Nottingham. I come as a citizen tonight. I live on 3593 Northeast Harvest. I just kind of want to help frame the conversation a little bit, just in some thoughts I was having while listening to that testimony. Homelessness can be a term we throw around and kind of, it's a big issue. I actually believe this boils down to behavioral issue, what in community policing and what's what we find in our community to be acceptable or not, and who can say, here are the guidelines, here's the outlines, here's what we expect in our downtown. And that really is where it comes down for me, that I walk, in fact, just tonight, drop my daughter off at dance, my son and I go get some hot chocolate, we walk Third Street because he likes to do that. I watch, and we're okay, but I think it comes down to behavior. And I think of that with growing up, tolerable behavior was a thing that was very clearly defined in my household, and it's also in mine. And I think maybe from the city council, we would ask as citizens, help us to define that tolerable behavior in our downtown and help us to have the ability to say what is right and what is not in behavior and manage to that. Because I don't think homeless people are the issue. I know that Mike down where I get to, I get to see Mike a lot. Mike currently does not have a home. He lives out of his car, but he is working hard, and he's saving money, and he's actually kind of community policing his own corner, and we thank him for that. And so we actually just had a cup of coffee a couple days ago to celebrate his seven years of sobriety. It was fun. So I don't think homelessness is the ultimate issue, and we've heard some other things. I think behavior. So what if we set guidelines to behavior? It's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, anybody else? Not Mark? Come on forward.
I live in the same neighborhood as Deborah and JW. Gotten to know them through the Neighborhood Association, and I think they're a real, you know, asset to the community. And I would hate to have what they're describing cause them to not feel comfortable or to want to move out of our neighborhood. The problem here is, you know, complex. I think everybody's said that, and I really like what Nathan said at the end there, that it's, that it's behavior, and we really have to focus on behaviors that are illegal and get them stopped. And it would be even nice if people were polite and behaved in a way that, you know, I guess I'd like to say we were all taught, but I'm not sure everybody was taught that way. And I think that's part of the problem we're facing here is some people just weren't raised with the same values as some of the rest of us. And, you know, how we're going to get to that point is not something that's going to happen overnight. But, you know, I, the other point I would like to make is somehow the word homeless gets thrown in here and becomes synonymous with this problem. And I don't think all the homeless are criminals. In fact, I don't even think a majority of the homeless are criminals. They're just poor. They don't have a place to live. It's a complex issue, as has already been alluded to with, you know, substance abuse and mental health issues, as Dr. Gibson said. And I just think we need to, you know, think real carefully as we proceed in a way that, you know, can be, can be effective and is not going to end up making the problem worse. And I think if some of you can remember back to when Pat Vallah testified, it was about a year ago, when you were talking about the Ranger program, you know, in downtown, and Pat was very unhappy. And what he was talking, I went in and spoke to him later, and he wasn't really concerned about the homeless. What he was concerned about is young people that hang out downtown that aren't homeless that are causing problems too. So I think that's maybe as much an issue as actually the people who physically don't have a place to live. So I think all of that needs to go into your consideration of whatever we're going to do moving forward here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, I think I'll take one more. Anybody else like to speak to the council on anything? Okay, hearing none, let's move, let's move right on along. Counsel, in your packet were the minutes of the November 10th, 2016 city council work session and our regular meetings. So has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, I will entertain, and if there's no changes, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
We have so moved by Counselor Hill. Do I have a second?
Take it.
Second by Counselor Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the council approved the minutes of the November 10th, 2015 work session and regular meeting. That will take us then to new business council, and under new business, we have one item tonight, and that's the presentation of the audit for fiscal year 2014-15 by Talbot Corvola and Warwick. So Marcia, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Tim Gillette. He was the partner on the audit for the city's financial statements for 2014-15 this year. This was the first year that we've worked with Mr. Gillette, and we did have some challenges this year, as you will hear about, a new accounting standard relating to our PERS liability. I did want to say that Mr. Gillette and his staff were wonderful in assisting us with implementing that standard, and we really enjoyed working with him. So, Tim, if you would, please provide your report to the city council. Thank you.
Welcome again, Tim.
Hi, thanks again. I'm Tim Gillette, partner at Talbot Corvola and Warwick, or TKW. Gosh, it's not, it's not all the time somebody sees I'm next on the agenda and they all get up and walk out of the room, but...
It's all about finance, Tim. Yeah, it's about numbers.
I just earlier this afternoon had a good meeting with Scott and Kelly and Fred with the Audit Committee, and we spent about an hour and a half going through the comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR. They said I should cut it a little bit shorter than that, so I'll try to keep it down to about an hour or so.
Time's up.
We are the independent auditors. This, the CAFR is more than 200 pages. There's only a very small part of it that's ours. Marcia and Julie and her staff put together most of it and do a lot of hard work, and we really appreciate that.
most of it and do a lot of hard work and we really appreciate that makes our job possible and easier our our part is limited to a few pages at the front where if you boil down to the the meat of it we say that in our opinion the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States based on our audit um it's a lot longer than that it takes us about three pages to say that but basically what that means is we've conducted an audit of the city's books and records and we think that the document as presented gives a fair representation of the financial status of the city. Um I usually refer people to management's discussion and analysis which comes right after our report in the document uh it's it's a lot shorter than the two hundred and some pages gives a very good overview I encourage everyone to read at least that portion it gives some background uh some comparative information and so forth. The statement of net position where if you were if you were a business this would be your balance sheet has a few new things on it this year that I would point out um accounting principles for governments are issued by a body called the Governmental Accounting Standards Board usually referred to as the GASB they issue statements were were up actually to I think is a GASB seventy six or seventy seven now but GASB sixty eight came into effect this year and it's a it's a big one and it makes a big difference and it basically means that you show your portion of the PERS liability or asset on your statement of net position this has not been done before big change uh it's as Marcia maybe alluded to a little bit this is the first year of it it's a complicated standard and the concept is simple but the actual application is fairly complex uh Marcia and her staff did a good job we worked it through it it's an unusual situation in Oregon this year because of the way the timing of this works I'll try to keep this brief it's hard uh the your PERS liability or in this case weird situation is actually shown as an asset because PERS at this point in time was considered to be overfunded the number is actually based on a twelve thirty one two thousand twelve actuarial valuation that then was rolled forward to six thirty thirteen that becomes the beginning point for the year six thirty fourteen being the ending point is the so-called measurement date and the six thirty fourteen number is actually what's reflected in your statement of net position so it's actually a full year behind there were some unusual things that happened in Oregon for one thing the legislature tried to reform PERS passed I think three different bills uh changing some benefits and so forth um and in addition investment returns were very good so from the beginning of six thirty thirteen to six thirty fourteen PERS went from about a roughly five billion dollar liability to a two billion dollar overfunded situation so that number your share of that two billion dollar over funding is reflected as an asset in your balance sheet now some other things have also happened you you most of you are aware I'm sure that April thirtieth the Oregon Supreme Court overturned most of those PERS reforms so that happened before the end of your fiscal year but it's after the measurement date so the effects of that change are not reflected in your financial statements um at this point we don't know the exact effects of that but the the estimates are included in the footnotes the financial statements the estimates are that the two billion dollar asset will flip back to be roughly a three billion dollar liability so next year instead of showing an asset you'll have your share of the liability to show on your statement of net position so there will be a big charge coming through your your statement of activities think of it as your income statement if you're commercially minded um will have a a big effect next year and it was a big effect this year as well I said also that the investment returns were better than expected. The way GASB works you don't get the benefit of those better than expected investment returns uh immediately it's amortized over a five-year period so there there are some other things on that statement of net position that you'll be seeing for the first time a deferred inflow of resources related to pension that'll get amortized over the five years there's also payments made into PERS after the measurement date that are a deferred outflow of resources so just some things for you to be aware of I won't go into that any further there was another odd little thing that kind of came to light this year as we were going through GASB sixty eight only indirectly related to GASB sixty eight uh the city joined the state and local government risk pool back in about two thousand two which was a time when the state was pushing that out there quite a bit for people to join that it was supposed to reduce fluctuations in your PERS contribution rates which it probably did because you had these various different governmental entities joining the risk pool at that time the state tried to level the playing field as they call it so they assessed some people a transitional liability other people they assessed a transitional asset the city of McMenville got a transitional liability assessed because of the time um under the accounting standards at the time you weren't showing pension liabilities in your statements in this particular case probably you should have but I don't think anybody else in the state did so you're not alone but there was this liability that was created out there roughly five and a half million dollars and it was to be amortized by an increase in your PERS contribution rate over a twenty-five-year period we're about halfway into that period the liability has come down from uh roughly five and a half million to about five point three million so it doesn't really seem like you're gonna meet the amortization period the way I calculated but but PERS does this it's not anything you have any control over it just it's an increase in your PERS rate so that's also uh in your statement of net position this year which wouldn't have been there in the past. The PERS footnote I used to say it was about two pages long now it's about ten pages long uh lots of information about PERS and your contribution to that I'm not gonna go through it in any kind of detail but there are things in there uh an estimate of the effect of the Morrow decision on the city uh some sensitivity analysis if if PERS doesn't meet their investment expectations of returns what happens if the rate is a one percent lower or higher and some things like that. And because accountants like to push the effects of any change back to the beginning of the period there is a restatement as of six thirty fourteen reflected in your statements as well and that uh that's broken down in some detail in the in your CAFR as well if you wanna see those details. So I won't go into the numbers in any great detail I'll assume you've all read those or will read those uh I probably wouldn't be the best one to answer questions about those anyway really Marcia would although it was mentioned in our Audit Committee meeting that people are interested in the debt situation of the city there is a nice breakdown page hundred and fifty and hundred and fifty-one uh shows all of the various debts when they all come due when they all fall off what the interest rates are and so forth so I can refer you to that for your reading pleasure. Last thing in the CAFR is the is the other little piece that's that's mine that's ours there's another report that is required by Oregon State Regulations the auditors have to look at certain items those items are listed in that letter um the good part is we say in connection with our testing nothing came to our attention and caused us to believe the city was not in substantial compliance with the various regulations and so forth that apply to that so it's a what some people would call a clean opinion from the auditor or an unmodified audit report the the kind you like to get you should never should never want to get an exciting report from the auditor. And if anyone has any questions I'm happy to take those otherwise I'll move on to the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay before we do that uh what I'll do is does the council have any questions and if not I will uh ask the two members of our Audit Committee either Scott or Kelly if they have any general comments or any comments at all regarding the audit and the auditing process Scott?
Uh well just to the council we did have a good hour and a half plus we had an opportunity to receive our CAFRs early so we've spent some time going through that looking at it more than just at the summary page a little more in depth and although we did have a long and late lengthy discussion on some of the GASB changes as it relates to PERS and the uncertainty there but we're in no different situation than municipalities and school districts across this whole state and we're well positioned as Tim indicated I think the overall um audit coming in with a clean finding uh you know a couple of things we we thank Marcia and her staff especially Julie who puts much much work into this process but more importantly I think we just know that we've got a auditing staff in our financial department that are dedicated to doing the very very best they can and I I know from my perspective I have the utmost confidence in what they're doing and how they're doing it that um at least being on the Audit Committee I feel very comfortable uh at you know two hundred and some pages and thirty pages of the Urban Renewal that you can feel that we're in good hands so Kelly would.
Kelly any comments you may want to add?
Uh the only thing I wanna add is again to thank Marcia and Judy in particular and the rest of the audit staff and to point out as Scott was saying that compared to most states Oregon is and the cities of Oregon we're in much better shape because we have been paying our liabilities on an ongoing basis many are grossly underfunded so we're fortunate that way it was a very great pleasure working with Tim this year we started talking to him earlier in the year about the audit process and uh coming together today and it was a good process we enjoyed it.
Okay and finally I will ask our city manager if she has any general comments on the audit so Martha.
No I just gotta look you know it says something we've been with um you know Rob Moody for a long time and so I appreciate when we switch out partners Tim really picking up the reins and making the transition as seamless as you as you could possibly make it I think the councillor here Kelly did talk a lot about the the completeness and in-depthness of which state regulation now puts in place for an audit of a city so uh it is a pretty thorough look but I do appreciate everything that because that helps make us better in the long term.
Okay thank you Martha so Tim I guess with that you can move on to the Urban Renewal Agency.
Great thank you that's a much shorter report so.
I remember when it used to be two pages.
Yes well and 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 my part of it even used to be very short and and it even with a short report like this it's still two and a half pages but again it's it's all really your financial statements put together by Marcia and Julie uh my part is really it takes a lot of words to say that in our opinion the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and so forth so again it's a clean opinion on the Urban Renewal Agency um again I'd point you to the management discussion and analysis there's no GASB sixty eight because the URA has no employees so that was a little bit easier there um and it also has the independent auditors report required by Oregon State Regulations in the back and again nothing came to our attention that caused us to think the URA was not in substantial compliance with the various ORS and so forth so again a unmodified clean opinion from the auditor on those financial statements.
Okay thank you Tim I'll turn it again let's start with Kelly over to our Audit Committee Kelly do you have any comments?
The only comment I would have doesn't directly relate to this one and it has to do with uh our audit staff receiving an award again as usual for their their excellent work on the CAFR.
Congratulations Marcia and thank your staff very much okay Scott?
And in reality this is the first report that has any substance from our Urban Renewal activities and so as you know we've got a lot on the plate and so next year there will be uh there will be some funding and some other things that are gonna hit but uh it follows the same format as the other.
Okay and once again Martha we'll close with you if you have anything.
Nothing.
Nothing okay does the council have any questions to Tim Marcia or our audit the committee members? Hearing none thank you very much Tim and it was a privilege in having you work with the city of McMenville this year and good job in picking up the reins and.
Great thank thanks again very much again appreciate Marcia and Julie's work couldn't have done it without them and Martha's support and the and the Audit Committee was a great committee to work with had a lot of good questions and appreciate working with them as well.
Thank you Tim.
Thanks.
And again Marcia make sure you're for myself and the council to thank your staff especially Julie and yourself who put in so much time on this okay council that will then move us down to our resolution section of our agenda we have two. Oh excuse me we did have two items and I'll let.
Mayor and it might be appropriate to share during the Audit Committee today we uh we brought Fred on to the Audit Committee.
Okay Fred Stemler from Rockology has joined our officially joined our Audit Committee and from a business perspective and business operations we're privileged to have him on the Audit Committee thank you Scott so Marcia the next item B on our new business is the presentation of the mid-year budget review so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mr. Mayor and councilors I want to thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight for the last several years you know that Mr. Bob Wells has come before you to provide a mid-year review and and to give his observations on the health of the city's general fund Bob has taken on the duties of Chair of the Salem Hospital so he is very busy and uh even though he is not available to work with us at this time uh he has expressed a lot of confidence in staff and Martha and the city council that uh will continue to do an excellent job with managing the city's budget you know as a matter of fact I've been at um several teaching seminars that Bob has done on budgeting and he actually has held up the city of McMenville as an excellent example of how to do budgeting right so I think that's a great compliment and I also would mention that Bob has fortunately offered to continue to be a great resource for us and he has encouraged me to call him at any time I very much appreciate that. So tonight I come before you with the present uh to present the mid-year report uh you've all had a chance to review the report so I'll just hit some of the highlights I would like to point out of course that the numbers that are on in the report for two thousand fifteen sixteen are estimated and based on the information that we have right now and as we continue to go through the budget process we'll update those numbers as you know the mid-year review is a very important part of the budget process we estimate revenues and expenditures for fifteen sixteen and then from there we estimate the carryover uh to fiscal year sixteen seventeen in the past we've been really pretty conservative with that estimate and usually the actual carryover or the reserve is higher than our estimated number uh this was also the case in we anticipate this will also be the case in fifteen sixteen and that um the beginning balance will um be greater than expected primarily due to savings in all the departments um also we project that in fifteen sixteen the revenue will be more than we expected primarily due to uh a four percent increase in assessed value and property taxes we had included a three point five percent increase in the budget this increase is very encouraging and is a reflection of the improving economy of McMenville. The fifteen sixteen budget that was adopted by the council reflected a cautious optimism that provided did provide for some strategic spending in of the reserve taking care of city employees has also been very important always been very important to the city council and in fifteen sixteen the city did implement some salary adjustments that uh for most general services employees with the goal of bringing those salaries close to market when we were looking at similar positions in comparable cities uh to avoid a significant impact on the budget in one year however we are implementing that. However, we are implementing that, those salary survey adjustments over the next three years. And we did also add back some staff. We buy, we did do some buying back of staff, some positions that were reduced during the recession. So based on that mid-year estimate, we project that the end of fiscal year 2015-16, that the reserve will be about 37%. We do know, of course, that the city will be faced with several challenges in 16-17 and beyond, especially with PERS, as we just spoke about. The PERS employer contribution really is our biggest concern going forward. Unfortunately, the PERS board has told us that, looking forward, we should assume that the PERS rate will increase the maximum amount, or basically as much as the rate collar allows. So the rate collar is just a policy that the board has in place to limit the amount of increase that can happen in any biennium. They did indicate that we should expect that increase, probably 20% of the rates, really any time in the near future. We're going to see pretty significant increases in PERS rates for some time. Since the PERS, the pension plan is the most expensive fringe benefit for the city, it actually was about $2 million in the general fund for 2014-15. When we get double-digit increases in that rate, you can imagine that really will have a pretty significant impact on our future general fund budgets. The other, the second most costly employee fringe benefit is medical insurance, which is about 1.5 million of the general fund budget. To manage the increase in cost for medical insurance, general services employees and fire union members did transition to a lower premium co-pay with a higher deductible and health savings account. However, due to the terms of the contractual bargaining agreement, the police union members continue to be on a plan with a high premium, a very low deductible, and a plan that actually could be subject to the Cadillac tax required by the Affordable Care Act, which looks like that will be implemented in 2020. And just to mention another cost that we've had quite a lot of discussion as a management team lately is about repairs and maintenance projects to our buildings, the ones that are maintained with general fund dollars, so the aquatic center, senior center, community center, and the fire hall. We've deferred some of those projects. We will be putting together a long-term capital improvement maintenance plan and really looking at what the facilities are, what the priorities should be. Of course, we also know there are some favorable economic indicators for, that are really encouraging for McMinnville. For example, there is a table in the report that shows that real market values are increasing, which is really encouraging, because we did see some pretty significant decreases in real market value, maximum assessed value. Again, we've got a nice trend going with assessed value. And of course, the valuation of construction permits is increasing. There are a couple of reasons why, a couple of things that are favorable to McMinnville right now is low interest rates, low rate of inflation, really conditions that are favorable to the construction industry. Unemployment rates are coming down. So we do expect the, again, slow but steady improvement in the economy for McMinnville. The city has identified two really key financial factors that we've used to help us measure the financial health of the general fund. One is whether revenues exceed expenditures, and two is the funding of the general fund reserve. The mid-year report includes a couple of tables on Page 3 that reflect where these two indicators have been over the last five years. You will note that in 2015-16, we are projecting that expenditures will actually exceed revenues by about $950,000, and of course, there would be a corresponding decrease in the general fund reserve. As I talked about previously on the first page of the report, when we're looking at fringe benefits and PERS and medical insurance and the salary adjustment, adding back some positions, most of the increase in expenses, the $950,000, I would attribute to increases in personal services costs. So while the reserve, at the end of 15-16, we do project that will be about 37%. And while that is well above the 25% that is recommended in the general fund policy, I do recommend that we should exercise caution moving forward. Personal services costs are the most significant portion of our budget, and they actually are about $14 million of the $20 million expenditures in the general fund. So really, any changes to salaries, fringe benefits, really can have a pretty substantial compounding effect over the years. And of course, also adding positions could have that same compounding effect going forward. We've always had the policy here to not add staff if we didn't feel that we could continue to keep that staff. And that's something that we will continue to keep in mind. So really, to summarize my report, we are estimating that for 15-16, a portion of the general fund reserve will be spent, and primarily due to increases in personal services costs. With the local economy slowly but steadily improving, we feel that's reasonable. We feel that it's a good use of the reserve to take good care of our employees. We do, however, of course, also recognize that it's important to maintain a healthy fund balance in the general fund and to balance that with the goal to provide excellent services to our citizens. So city staff will be bringing you a proposed budget for 2016-17 in mid-May. As the Budget Committee and the City Council consider that budget that will be proposed by city staff, I think it's important that we keep in mind some advice that was given to us by Bob Wells when he was here about a year ago, speaking to you. So if I may quote something that he did say in his report, he said, "I would recommend continuing the successful approach you have followed these past years. Be deliberate, be strategic, and take a long-term perspective." Thank you for your time and attention, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council for Marcia? If not, thank you. Oh, Kelly?
I just wanted to make one comment.
Sure.
I just think it's really nice to have you come and report to us this year and get your opinion of how things are going. We greatly respect your opinion on this, and just wanted you to know that, and I wanted the council to know how nice it is to have a highly respected CPA who is handling this for us.
Thank you very much, Kelly. I appreciate that.
Very excellent, very excellent report, and I agree with Kelly, it was nice. We always enjoy seeing Bob, you know, but it was really nice having you present the report this year, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Marcia, comments? If none, thank you, Marcia.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and that will take us into our resolution, and we have two resolutions tonight. The first resolution is Resolution Number 2016-7, and that's making certain City of McMinnville budgetary transfers for fiscal year 2015-2016. So Marcia, you might as well continue on that one.
Thank you. This resolution is being brought before you tonight because of an opportunity that actually came to the Urban Renewal Agency to do some street improvements on Alpine Avenue, kind of in conjunction with the transportation bond projects. When we adopted the budget a year ago for the city, we did not anticipate that we would want the city to be making a $163,000 loan to urban renewal. The $163,000 is to pay for the design costs of that urban renewal portion of the Alpine Avenue project. Local budget law does allow us to amend the budget when events occur that were not anticipated when the budget was being adopted. So this resolution for the city amends the general fund budget. You'll see at the bottom of the page, there's a table there that shows the existing adopted budget for 15-16. There's an increase in the special payments category, which is the loan to the Urban Renewal Fund, and a decrease to the operating contingency.
Okay, do we have any questions for Marcia? Let's start with you, Alan.
The only one that comes to my mind, and maybe it's more for Doug, is the, have we started actually doing the design work for Alpine?
We have indeed. We have started that work with HDR and Sarah Architects, and they're well underway.
Thank you.
Hey, Remy? Scott?
No.
Okay, Larry? Kelly?
No.
Council President Jeffrey, is any for you?
Nope, and that, so hearing that we don't have any, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2016-7, making certain City of McMinnville budgetary transfers for fiscal year 2015-2016. So do we have a motion?
A move.
Moved by Council Mickey, second by Council President Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 2016-7 passed the City Council unanimously. That will take us into our second resolution, councilors, and that's Resolution 2016-8, and that's approving the loan agreement and promissory note between the City of McMinnville and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency. So Marcia?
I think Doug's got this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, that's yours. You're just over there so quiet.
This is dangerous territory when you have a planner dealing with financial issues, but I'm gonna, that aside. This you have before you tonight is a companion piece to the budget amendment resolution that this council just took action upon. Again, this resolution, along with the attached loan agreement and the promissory note, provides the details behind the loan, its repayment schedule, interest rates, and all those other fine details that you need to provide the certainty in moving this loan forward. Your approval of this resolution will authorize the city manager on behalf of the city council to execute the note and move the process forward. And if you do have any questions regarding this, I'm sure that the city attorney would be more than happy to answer the questions.
Uh-oh, David. Uh-oh, David. So thank you, Doug. Is there any questions of either Doug or our city attorney? Let's start, Larry, down there with you.
No.
Kelly?
None.
Kevin? Scott?
No.
Remy? Alan?
Just a real quick one. It may be good to outline the terms on the note, the actual note, just for our own and the public's knowledge.
So as Doug indicated, the loan is in the amount of $163,000 or an amount up to $163,000. The actual amount will be determined based on what the actual design and engineering fees end up being. The term of the note is three years, up to three years, with no prepayment penalty that allows time for the Urban Renewal Agency to pay that off using the tax increment monies that are coming in. The interest rate is, as was set out in the intergovernmental agreement, the original intergovernmental agreement between the city and the URA, which allowed for this type of a loan to occur, the interest rate is set at 1% above the rate that the city is earning in interest from the local government investment pool. That's currently 0.6474%. So the interest rate on this loan is initially 1.6474%. It will be adjusted annually based on the average annual rate that we receive from LGPI, sorry, from the local government investment pool, LGIP. And I believe that that covers the bulk of it, one payment per year.
Does that answer your question, Alan?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, do we have any more questions or comments among the council? If not, then again, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 2016-8. So we have moved by Council Rudin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 2016-8 passed the council unanimously. Okay, councilors, that move us into our advice and information items, including our advice and information items is the Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Since we have an urban renewal meeting going on, we'll dispense with the reports from councilors on committees and board assignments tonight, but we'll go around the table real quick. Quick, nice to have you with us tonight. Tim, do you have anything you would like to add, if anything's going on at PD?
Just to add that as a coming from the 15, we don't want an officer, he's moving off to Primeville and Rose will be working.
You mean, we have an officer that wants to leave McMinnville?
He's got a family in Central York.
That's no, that's no reason.
They need to move here.
Okay, anything else, anything else, Tim?
I hope he's not going there for jet skiing, because Primeville Reservoir is kind of a, it's a creek right now.
Okay, anything else, Tim? Okay, Marcia?
Really, nothing else to add tonight. We're staying very busy in the finance department.
Okay, Doug?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. And I think Mar, Rose, we have a reminder that the 18th is the city local government dinner in Amity, and are you still waiting to hear back from everybody, whether they'll be attending or not?
I am still waiting to hear back. Everybody got their invitation at their places tonight.
Okay, you can put Candy and I down, down for that? Anybody else know for sure right now?
We'll be out of town, so no.
Yeah, we're out of town, too.
No. No. Kevin?
I think if I stay one more time with you guys, I think we might have to like get a place together or something. It's like, might be easier for you to settle in the same house.
Yeah, we can get, there's a frat house over by Lipton that's gonna be for sale. Kelly?
What's the date?
The 18th.
Penalty yes.
Penalty yes, okay. Yes, and I think, Martha, you'll decide if you're gonna be there and that Rose, no? Okay, thank you. So do we have anything more to come in front of the city council tonight, councilors? If not, council meeting adjourned. Okay, let me go to my other, go to my other one.
Open up.
Okay, what I'll do then is I will go ahead and I will open up Call to Order, the February 9, 2016, meeting of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency. And with that said, I think to begin with, we have one public hearing tonight, and that's a public hearing regarding a supplemental budget resolution altering the urban renewal budget by more than 10%. So that being, that being said, let me get to this. I think Marcia, you're gonna handle that one tonight?
Yes, sir, thank you. The public hearing is required by local budget law. We are, again, allowed to amend the budget when events occur that we did not anticipate while the budget was being adopted. In this case, the urban renewal fund, as you can imagine at this point, does not have a very large budget. So a $163,000 amendment to the budget is actually more than 10% of the expenditures, and that's why a public hearing is required.
Okay, thank, thank you, Marcia. And being that this is a legislative-type public hearing, I will go ahead and ask anybody in the audience if they'd like to make any comments regarding this public hearing. Okay, hearing, hearing none, then why don't we go ahead and, Marcia, if you could go ahead, and do you have a staff report, which I already believe? So let's go ahead, and what I will do is I will now close the public hearing, and it's open to council discussion, so is there any council discussion? Let's start with Kelly.
No.
Larry?
No.
Remy? Alan? Scott?
I just, again, just a comment, is that I think our discussion of borrowing from the city, giving them a 1%, it's good for the city, it gives us flexibility, having that three-year payback, so that other items that might come up in the in-between gives us some funds to work with. So I think it's a win-win all the way along, and we're able So I think it's a win-win all the way along, and we're able to piggyback the Alpine Avenue and has some, I think, some economies of scale that work into that also.
Scott, and I'll leave the last comments up to our council president, so Kevin, you have any comments? No comments, then I'll, let me go ahead and through that, I'll go ahead, and I believe we have to poll the council on that one, and just true, Rose, since it is a public hearing, or David?
No, no, we're in the resolution.
We just finished the deliberations, so.
So then you just, you can just move forward on voting on the resolution?
Okay, that's fine. So we do have a resolution then, and that would be Resolution 2016-1, adopting McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency supplemental budget for fiscal year 2015-16, and making supplemental appropriations. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion? So moved. So moved by Council Hill, and second by Council Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 2016-1 passed the council unanimously. And again, that will take us into Resolution 2016-2, and that's approving a loan agreement and promissory note between the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency. And again, Doug, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few moments ago, in your capacity as a city council, you approved a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a note on your behalf to pay for the Alpine Avenue Extensions Project Design and Engineering Services. This resolution that's before you is a complement to that action, which if you approve, would authorize the chair of the Urban Renewal Agency to sign the note. And with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions of staff? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2016-2.
So moved.
We have a motion by Council Yoder, I have a second. Second by Council Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show, the record show that Resolution 2016-2 passed the council unanimously. Council, that takes us into Resolution 2016-3, and that's approving a contract with Encon Northwest for updating tax increment financing revenue projections. And Doug, can you take this one, too, please?
More than happy to, sir. In advance of obligating the urban renewal district to larger sums of debt, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, as well as staff, recommend that the tax increment revenue projections that you find in the urban renewal report be updated. In so doing, we hope that those would then better reflect the current economic situation as well as some of those growth assumptions that were previously modeled, and those are very important in that they drive those numbers. As such, we have proposed to you to engage the services of Echo Northwest to do that work. You may recall that Echo Northwest was the author of the projections previously done in the report, and they have a statewide reputation of being leaders in this type of work. The contract that's before you would authorize them to start work, and on this project with an amount not to exceed $5,770, we would anticipate the work would be done by mid-March, and the payment of that amount or for that contract would come from the current urban renewal debt service fund.
Any questions for staff or from Doug? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Have some moved by Council Rudin? Do I have a second? Second by Council President Jeffries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show the Resolution 2016-3 passed the council unanimously. So before adjourn, I'd like to thank anyone in the audience that attended tonight. It's always a pleasure to see citizens come to our council meetings and having the ability to provide input to the council, which is very important for the council to make sure our citizens are given an opportunity to have say in the, the management of their local government. So that being said, being adjourned.